Okay, today is Monday, January 13th, 2014. It's roughly 6:15. Call it the order of the meeting of the Brattleboro Planning Commission.
First meeting of 2014.
The first meeting of 2014. We passed the town plan, we get the town plan passed in 2013, so I have to follow that up. It's a big step. Approved minutes of December 9.
I move that we approve the minutes of December 9 meeting.
Okay.
I'll second.
Give that one to Elizabeth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
They never give us time to comment even if we wanted to.
All those who can.
I don't have any, they're just, they were good. I learned, I learned all, went on when I wasn't here.
Anybody opposed? Okay, 4-0, passed. Announcements. We are still looking for a member of the Planning Commission to fill the seat of Mr. Verzino who resigned last month. As you can see, we've got four tonight. I think we had four last week, and our quorum is four, so...
All hands on deck.
Yeah, if you're out there and you're interested in the way Brattleboro is planned and zoning ordinances, please join the planning commission.
You will, um...
We want you.
Fill out the remainder of Jimmy Verzino's seat. I'm not sure how long that is. One more year, two more years?
I'm not sure.
You're gonna have to draft somebody soon.
He was just re-upped.
Yep.
No, he wasn't just re-upped.
I think you're right.
I can get him.
Because wasn't there some question as to whether he was gonna be able to re-up? Or was that a question?
No, um, his term is to this June, so it's just...
Six months.
Okay, so it's only a six-month obligation. Come and try it out. Any other announcements?
Um, just wanted to let you know that we are applying, we're in the midst of writing a grant to the EPA to start a brownfields assessment fund, and we are envisioning that the Planning Commission would have an oversight role in that, and so that would give the town funding to pay for an environmental consultant to do assessments and cleanup planning on contaminated sites.
Like the place next to the youth theater, is that a brownfield?
That is a brownfield.
Yeah.
Yep, it has been assessed, but the grant's due next Wednesday. Obviously, we won't know until the spring if we're successful, but if we are, you'll be hearing a lot more about it.
Are there any other permanent brownfields downtown?
Downtown, um, the...
Well, the assessment will tell us.
Yeah. The green space, um, in the archery building, you know, so down, down on the river, that was a brownfield.
And where the...
The Brattleboro Transportation Center was a brownfield site.
Where the new housing is gonna go for seniors is a brownfield site.
Yeah, that's being assessed right now. The town was having an assessment done on the custom laundry property, so there's, there's a lot of potential, because remember, brownfields are real or perceived contamination, so if you look back at the historical use of the property, there's been a lot of industrial uses in the downtown and, or, you know, uses of petroleum.
Sure. Okay, West River, uh, sorry, is there any, any other announcements? Okay, there's no public here.
Oh, actually, there is, of a remote kind, but, um, the Public Service Board and their wisdom has finally determined that the solar installation on Technology Drive, 90 Technology Drive, will be considered under the...
I can't hear you, sorry.
The Public Service Board has determined that they will hear the application from Win Stanley LLC for the solar panel project on 90 Technology Drive as a 248J, that's the expedited process.
Good.
They took our recommendation.
Yeah. How does the Select Board feel about that?
Okay, at this point, it's about two months longer than it would have been if it was a normal process. So, um, yeah, that's the only option, yeah.
There are no members of the public present tonight, so we will skip public comment. West River Trail requests for letter of support for retaining pedestrian bridge.
Yeah, we're expecting...
Them, actually.
Some members to come and speak to it.
Well, when Sue and I were on the aesthetic evaluation committee for the bridge...
All right.
The Friends.
Um, every...
They're all the Friends.
The FIG bridge, the firm that, one that designed, incorporated plans to house such a pedestrian bridge in it.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, that's what's indicated here.
And then basically seeking support for a project that would resemble that structure.
So, this is just support?
Well, I believe what they're trying to do is to come to a couple of the different downtown boards and commissions to seek your support before, I think, making a pitch to the Select Board to have the town...
They have to go before the Agency of Transportation, don't they?
I believe they've had some conversations with the Agency of Transportation, so...
But they have to get final permission from them, I think, is what I've gathered in here.
Well, how would it be funded? They asking?
They say they're not gonna ask the town.
Friends.
They must be asking the grants here.
I think they're gonna...
That's why they want some of our support, because they wanna, um, it sounds like they wanna look for money.
Well, I think this looks pretty cool. Does anybody...
I think it's great.
Is it great?
Nope.
I like it. I mean, there's a few questions that they posed themselves that I'd like to see you answer. It'd be pretty neat to walk to that park.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, I ride that trail.
Yeah, it's a nice trail.
So you don't have to go all around.
And there's gonna be lookouts on each side.
On the bridge, yeah.
Like a plaza.
Down the river, lower.
And if that neighborhood that we talked about in the town plan materializing near the fields by the marina ever materialized, this would be a nice walking distance to recreation.
Well, they talk about how it could connect to the trails that the retreat owns and, you know, just walking distance to lots of things. And my only concern is, and they had it under their mostly frequently asked questions, as they called it, would it be dangerous, safety issues, you know, just wondering if, and who monitors all that, and...
Who would be responsible?
Yeah, and just, I mean, I could see it falling into some, I don't know what the word is, just...
Disrepair?
Pranksters or, you know, whatever, 'cause it's, and just wanting to be sure that it's high enough for floods and ice in the future. They say that, that it's planned that way, and the bridge people did...
I don't wanna say it can't go, so...
They've got it in their plans, the bridge people had it put in their plans to do all that, so I'm assuming that that's in there, and will it swing, you know? Will it be kind of, you know, a suspension bridge, is that gonna be solid, or, I assume it would be, because it has all those...
In some places, a little bit of sway is, is healthy.
Yeah, for wind and whatnot.
So, if we all agree, oh, sorry.
But no, but I, I support it, I think it's a great idea.
If we all agree, I think the motion would be to draft the letter and authorize me to sign it indicating that we support the pedestrian bridge over the West River Trail. Anyone?
I move that we do a letter of support for the pedestrian bridge over the West River Trail.
And authorize me to sign it?
And, yes, and authorize our chair to sign it.
Okay. I'll second. Second for Mr. Heath here. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Letter?
We didn't write a law.
Yeah, I feel like the West River Trail Committee is a very responsible committee, so I would, whatever.
They've certainly done a lot in the last 10 years.
Yeah, and I think they do their research knowing the fact that, like, Alex Wilson is on it just for one alone, is... My other question to them, if they come, would be, is it just for pedestrians, or could bicycles go across it?
They can always walk, if they...
At face value, I think that's what they do.
Says eight feet across, so I'm assuming...
Yep.
It's done.
All right.
Okay, so neighborhood stability. That's probably the correct way of saying that there is a problem in Brattleboro with houses that are being poorly maintained, or have become dilapidated, or have serious problems that don't seem to get fixed, where the seriousness is extreme enough that they either endanger their occupants, or their neighbors, or reduce property value for the neighborhood, or demand more public services if they burn down, or if there are emergencies relating to infrastructure, or other things like that. Combined with the fact that we have a very aesthetically pleasing downtown, and a lot of money comes in from tourism, that's an asset for Brattleboro that's important to protect, so...
Is this buildings in general, or residential, or both?
Don't know.
And...
That's right, there's no real specifics. We only picked these ordinances from other towns for conversation.
Yeah.
But...
James, did you start the...
I did.
He did.
Sorry, I didn't get everything.
The reason, I, I brought this up because I live on, on Green Street, and there was recently a fire on Elliott Street in, I think actually a pretty well-maintained building, and a fire on Green Street in a building that appeared poorly maintained. In the last year, we had the issue where the town had to purchase a property that an owner was not able to rehabilitate after it was flooded, and I think anyone here can observe that there's some...
Is that on Elm Street corner? It's been attacked, isn't it?
Western Avenue.
The Western Avenue.
Oh.
And I think there's, you know, anyone in town can observe that there are some houses in downtown that appear to be in a really bad state of disrepair, to the point of being a safety issue. So, um, I called up Rod the other day, and I said, maybe we should look at the way some other towns deal with this. And I had seen a newspaper story about Greenfield considering something similar, because they have a housing stock where they have, I think, bigger problems like blight than we have, and I'm kinda worried that some...
Isn't that what we're talking about here? We're not talking about blight?
Well, I don't know if blight and dilapidation, same thing. I always considered blight to be people left these houses and they're ready to be...
Well, what I would think, and instead of these ordinances, we can certainly talk about them, but...
I don't think we could pass any of these legal...
Yeah, I'm, I was thinking, as I said before, more in the rehabilitation mode, that if you call, if something gets declared blighted, then they're open for more opportunities for rehabilitation than if they weren't, like you'd get grant money and, or some, it could be blighted and condemned, and a redeveloper could purchase it and so forth, that, that type of thing, more than this kind of police action that these ordinances...
Is this your New Jersey coming out? I mean, when I think of what you're saying, I mean, I think the...
Hey, when you're talking blight, you gotta talk New Jersey.
Yeah, I think where I grew up in Hartford, Connecticut, I mean, you know, a lot of inner-city kind of, same kind of buildings you're talking about.
Well, it's a very good tool that, apparently Connecticut's went all the way to the Supreme Court, but, yes. It is a tool that, that people use for redevelopment purposes, and, which is seeming to me more positive than a building coming to the point of being, for example, vacant, and then being condemned, that, I don't know, it just doesn't have a positive resolve, resolution to it.
And that's our challenge.
It's interesting, I didn't get a chance to speak with the planner from Greenfield, who is working on the Greenfield...
Study.
Yeah, it might even be called, I don't think it's a slum and blight study, but I think they do use the word blight in theirs, and they actually are going to be identifying properties now. They've got some funding from the state of Massachusetts that flows differently from community development block grants, so I think that the benefit for them of identifying properties is exactly that, so when funding becomes available, they can do what needs to be done, facade improvements, you know, code improvements, that kind of thing.
Right.
Which is different than any of the models that I saw.
And this is even individual owners almost buildings, rather than, say, the town?
I believe so, I haven't been able to...
Like, either they get funding to remedy the blight, or a third, you know, or it gets condemned, and a third party can come in.
I think, one of the issues, we, we talked about this actually with the Planning Commission way back in an earlier phase of the town plan, and when T-PAG was still around, and we had an interest in a particular neighborhood then, more from the standpoint, I think the, we used politically correct term, I think we'd use the term transitional. So, there was, we identified a neighborhood, and then we felt that there was enough positive things going on in that neighborhood that, that could be encouraged, and there are also enough disturbing things around neglect of properties and so forth that were going on in the same neighborhood that we wanted to try and stem or, or overcome. And then upon closer investigation, we found that that neighborhood was a little bit more varied than we had assumed from, you know, from the outside, I guess, or from the beginning. That was the first issue, that it wasn't, and so then it became, you know, harder and harder to sort of even identify a whole block. And my sense of even Greenfield is that you can travel for several blocks at a time. I always get a little bit confused geographically, but I think south...
Of the train station.
South of the train station, you can certainly travel several blocks, and there are very few residential properties that meet reasonable standards. And then there's another neighborhood immediately north of the downtown, it's a smaller pocket, but it's, and it's a bit more varied, but there's certainly blocks in there that, so you could actually map out fairly significant areas and come up with, you know, neighborhood level plans that were gonna address something like that, and research the ownership and those kinds of things. I think that one of the other attributes that they're exploring is how to further regulate the private rental market in Greenfield, which many of these properties are, and that, so that's, that's much more consistent with my common understanding of the term blight. We've got patches, and they're pretty, and some very, some properties in very poor quality, or very poor condition, that have been like that for an extremely long period of time. What we have less of is clear, good state statute, for instance, that would allow us to condemn, so condemning a privately owned property in Vermont that is owner-occupied is practically impossible, and many of the properties that we've looked at fall into that category. If they're rented out, we actually have a little more leverage, but it's still pretty challenging.
I think what it needs to, it, it needs to actually be causing public health and welfare issues, and a lot of times...
That's hard to measure or identify.
It's hard to measure, I mean, the fact that you have a failing subject system on your property doesn't constitute a public health and...
Right.
...safety issue, which is kinda surprising to me, because it does impact the people that live there, but I guess the state is kind of...
And large rodents moving around on, you know, off, on and off the site, in daylight hours is basically the threshold for a public health issue in an urban neighborhood where you could then condemn, you know, a vacant property or a semi-occupied property because of the impact it was having on neighboring properties. So the, so the challenge that we have is a little bit to do with the state statute, a little bit to do with the kind of geographical distribution of the sites, the weirdness of...
Uh, the Friends.
The Friends are here.
Friends, Tom.
Should we just cut to the chase and let them know?
We approved your proposals and your letter.
I'm gonna write a letter of support for you.
If you wanna, if...
If you wanna come to the activity.
We can, we can take a break from what you're doing, if you'd like to talk or be on TV.
You stretch my leg, I'll stretch you.
Yeah, maybe they should be on TV, so other people can see it.
It looks like a great proposal, so...
This way other people can see it, if you present now and...
Yeah.
It's on TV.
Sure. Come.
You wanna come on in? Where's the terrible loser?
The terrible loser.
Did Lester come, or?
No.
No, you're in. So you just talked about it without us, without anybody.
Can she?
This way you can see it?
Rod will.
Oh, you wanna say it? Okay, well, I guess they don't see it over there, so put it on this side.
And I know two...
Did you see any printed materials?
Well, you think it's the other cell, it's not, actually, I think with the...
And can I have your name?
Yes. Marshall Stecker.
Okay, you were on the line, okay.
Never really worked, but don't worry about it.
I know Kathleen.
Such a thing as COVID, I mean...
Kathleen White, Jason Cooper. And we apologize, we were just at a meeting with the Parks and Recreation Board.
That's all right. We moved pretty quickly through our agenda.
Well, now I'm gonna lay down, that's great.
No, that's all right, that's all right.
So, we're, we're here to share our vision, and our vision is for, oops, you need to stop. Our vision is for a pedestrian connector between two significant recreational amenities in the town, one of which the town owns, and the other, which is owned by the Friends of the West River Trail. This is I-91, this is the West River Trail with its trailhead down just beyond north of the West Marina parking area, and this is the whetstone, the Riverstone Preserve, which is just upstream by a couple hundred yards from the town's property on the West River Park. The trail itself continues all the way up to the access on the Rice Farm Road and beyond, up towards where the nature conservancy trails are at the base of Black Mountain Road.
Where's the, the new West River Park playing fields on your map?
They are located right here.
All right.
They, the parking area, the driveway in to that parking area is approximately, what, 100, 200 yards just north of the bridge. It's not very far from the base of the bridge itself, the parking, the driveway in to the parking area. There's another access farther up near where the concession building is going to be. So our proposal, our vision, is for a pedestrian bridge to be suspended under I-91 while that bridge is in construction. And our reason for speaking to everyone now is that this is the time, if we're going to build a pedestrian bridge, it's now, during the construction itself. And when the FIG company designed, presented their original design to the Vermont Department of Transportation, it did in fact include the possibility of a suspension bridge, and we're here to get your support, and of other entities in town, and individuals, to hopefully be able to allow us to go and petition the Vermont Department of Transportation to consider in fact authorizing that construction to proceed, or a design to be finalized, construction to proceed. So here with me tonight, Jason Cooper and Kathleen White, who are on the steering committee of the West River Trail, and I'm going to let Jason come and answer any questions you might have.
So, does anyone have any questions? Yes?
A couple of us were on the aesthetic evaluation committee for the Route 91 bridge, and this was, of course, included, and so, and we're all in support of this project. But I thought you should let the Wyndham Regional Commission, Matt Mann, know, so that you can get their support, because they're the liaison to the Department of Transportation.
We have been working very close with Matt and with Wyndham Regional, and they are not only very aware of this, they have been very supportive of the project. I think it's a great enhancement to the community, to the trail, and to the park.
If I had a question about, would bicyclers be allowed on, it says eight feet wide.
Yes.
Would they have to walk their bikes across for safety sake, or?
I don't think they would need to. I, I, it depends on what the final design of the actual footbridge is. Right now, we're, we're talking conceptual design, and just the idea of, do, is everyone on board with the idea of having a footbridge there? FIG, which is the design firm, as, well, we're actually in discussions with them right now, to see what would be involved in the design, they would come to us with suggestions of different design possibilities, and then we would look at those and see what we thought was best fitting for this installation.
Would you be open to having any of those past members of the aesthetic committee chime in with you guys at that point?
We would prefer it. We want as much input as possible, we wanna make sure that the public and every committee that's involved has, is informed and has input into this process, because it's gonna be better if everyone who's involved gets to do that.
Well, we like it, we pass the motion to write a letter, and have me sign it, so we're supportive, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's a great, great idea.
Thanks a lot.
And to do it now while the bridge is, obviously...
If that's a part one tonight, you could do it.
Yeah.
Well, one of the benefits of, of doing it now is, we, as we were originally learning that the interstate was gonna be doing, replacing the bridge, and understanding that they were gonna be closing the trail for such extended periods of time, we looked at the possibility of building a footbridge right down at the, at the West River Park, and the price came in at over $400,000, which we were a bit dismayed at, we felt that was a little beyond our means. But by having the connection points already designed into the bridge, and the fact that we, the veranda-like viewing ports that are on both sides become the footings, or abutments for the footbridge, means that more than half of the cost has already been...
It's already there.
...taken out of the equation. So we're hoping that we can get this bridge under there for less than $200,000, where we feel that that is a manageable number to raise funds for, for us to do, and we're also talking to FIG about donating their services, and if PCL, who is the construction company, is, has all of their crew and equipment there, we feel that they are a good candidate to help keep our costs even lower, and we don't know what the bottom line is gonna be, but we feel that we have a, this is the best time. Once all that equipment and manpower goes away, you know, they're gonna be, it's gonna cost more to get them back.
That's right.
So this is the prime time to, to make this happen.
And we're behind you on that one.
Great.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, so very much.
Yeah, don't forget your email. Okay. Okay, so back to dilapidating buildings, or blight, or whatever we wanna call them. I mean, the challenge is, every suggestion we've discussed is beyond our power, and our only power is restricted, probably.
Well, does the state get community development block grant money?
Yep.
The state does get community development block grant money. I haven't read their... I'm not as familiar with their plan.
I've, I've read the...
I mean, there is, there is slum and blight funds, there is a portion dedicated to that. I know one of the trickier parts, I know properties who've tried to use it, and if you don't have a redevelopment plan, pre-firm, good commitments, you won't get it. Brooks House used slum and blight funds, they got a good chunk of it, but they had a serious plan.
Yes, and Bellas Falls.
The Polo Building?
Well, Bellas Falls can't do it, nobody can.
Well, actually, no.
About Highland Park, did they spend that money?
Yeah, they did use it for the old hotel, but they failed, the one that burnt down more recently, Unas, did not, because it did not... recently, Unas, did not, because it did not have a redevelopment plan, it did not work for them. So you get the hole in the ground effect, which, which some of us really liked, depending on what your plan is, so.
Put a kettle on there.
So I think even when Irene went down and in the post-Irene recovery phase, the condemnation powers that the state have, or the sort of really high threshold that they use for condemnation, became a talking point between the town and the state, and the state, both at the legislative level and at the executive level, showed little appetite for changing the current setting. And then I think a bigger problem for us would be, absent of some kind of a program that was going to say to a property owner, we have these resources available to do something with your building, either you play or you go away, that, that takes quite a bit of resources, and I don't think we're in a position to do that.
But if you consider that to help rehabilitate buildings, we have assets like the Housing Trust that have done a lot for buildings in Brattleboro. And if you consider that in the area of town that most people agree is the most sensitive, almost all of the housing is apartments, we would have the power, if we had an ordinance saying, listen, if you've got tenants, you can't put them in a house that's falling down, to take away their permit to have tenants there.
There is a rental housing, there is a rental housing code in state statute. My understanding is it's pretty vague.
Yes, yes.
Don't you need something as?
And that's why towns have actually gone a different route, because it's actually not very protective to people living there.
I would say, when you look at these, I mean, when Sue did the work of looking at other towns enforcing their powers, if you look at Berry and Hartford and think about those two communities, Hartford takes in Wire River Junction.
Yep.
To some extent, what you see here is some kind of reaction to the limits of state statute, and it is framed in a kind of a punitive and negative way.
So this is what happens to people who don't have building inspections?
Yeah, exactly, I was just going to say that, the other part.
Exactly.
You know, this is so.
Right.
Yeah, so then.
Right.
You're getting them at the worst end.
Yeah, I had an email here from a zoning administrator in Berry, and he was saying that Chapter 123 is minimum housing codes, and it allows communities to set up a registration process for rental properties and require periodic inspections. And he said in Berry, they require rental properties to meet HUD Section 8 requirements. These are horribly written standards, so I would discourage folks from taking that route. Burlington and other towns adopt their own rules, allowing for enforcement of smoke detectors, lead paint, electrical issues, et cetera. But then there's the whole building inspection piece, which is probably, could be, it's an enforcement, but a better tool.
Tool at this point than waiting for something to become vacant or completely dilapidated.
Right. So you're telling me we have no power to withhold a permit to allow someone to rent their property?
Rental properties are required to meet the state building code, so I think they're supposed to be inspected by the state fire marshal, but it's life safety.
For life safety issues only.
Yeah.
So things that, including, you know, debris around the outside of the house, where the cars are parked, the landscaping.
Hallways being clear.
Trash storage, you know, receptacles for trash, the use of dumpsters is, you know, they're, the siding of dumpsters, all those kinds of things that contribute at this sort of individual parcel or property level to the notion that the neighborhood is transitional or that this property in particular is problematic, all those things are looked past by the state fire marshal and the code for, you know, life safety. I would, yeah, I would say that the town is relatively on the ball in the life safety arena and takes it as far as you can.
There are tools in place, Brian was explaining a little bit about the health order, which is under a different statute than some of these that I presented to you. Bellas Falls, I think, is pretty active in issuing health orders. I mean, there's a, there's a multifamily rental unit that they have basically said, nope, you guys are kicked out until the issues are fixed. But it's not.
The end is beyond our power.
It's select board power. Yeah, I mean, I don't think you're going to find a zoning tool that, that's going to work to address the issues. I think, you know, some sort of blight study and, like, that is something the planning commission could do and.
If you're trying to find a way to say that if they wanted to make changes to the property, they couldn't do so unless they brought it up to a certain level.
Can't understand what you're saying.
If we, if we developed ordinances that would prevent them from making substantial changes to the property unless they brought it up to a certain level, like adding a unit?
I think the issue that we have here, I mean, I think that's a good thing to think about and to have on the books. I would say.
That's not going to do anything.
A lot of the properties that we're really talking about, it's the no change problem, it's not the change problem. So you have, you have landlords who own multiple properties with very dubious, you know, breaking out of apartments, you know, so for instance, you'll have extremely difficult access to one or two apartments. One apartment will be in the basement and, you know, access to that apartment will be through, you know, another apartment, or you'll have one in the attic, and you've got similar problems, you've got, basically, you've got some form of overcrowding, you've got bad arrangements for parking in the yard, you've got all sorts of weird things that are going on. The landlord's not interested at all in changing the footprint of the building, they'll just purchase another cheap building and keep on doing it. They're not, their, their whole strategy is about minimizing any kind of capital expenditure and extracting maximum cash flow, and so.
And that's why you need an incentive, and we don't have it.
Right. It's very hard to provide an incentive, and I think absent some kind of incentive program, the punitive stuff is going to be politically very difficult to move on, because people will interpret it as a heavy-handed attempt to do something about the appearance of the town at the expense of low-income renters. And so.
Or a person's own, if it's a single-family house, a person's own.
All right, affordable, it'll be, it'll be interpreted as, you know, as a negative impact on affordable housing.
Even if we're willing to take both the ways we're doing, it sounds like there's no procedural, no procedural way to do it.
Well, all of these, all of these ordinances have procedure.
This work.
We can't, we can't, we can't do this.
We'd have to make a.
We'd have to have the recommendation to the select board, and they'd have to agree.
And then they would have to pass an ordinance.
Right. And then that would necessitate, in each one of these cases, it would necessitate charging probably the zoning administrator or the health officer, and that happens to be the same person, with the enforcement ability to do it, and it's a workload and work management issue.
What's on the books now that can be used?
So we have a, and it is used occasionally, we've got a, in the Brattleboro Code of Ordinances, it's Chapter 8, there's a nuisance, Article 1, there's a nuisance ordinance, they have unsanitary use of property, and there's a list of about eight, eight items that constitute how it's unlawful for a person to allow his or her property to become a public nuisance. And so it's things as unsanitary sewage or plumbing facilities, if it's regarded as a public nuisance at common law, I mean, the physical condition or accuracy of any premises regarded as a public nuisance at common, I think it's pretty vague, it could be a little bit difficult to act on, but there have been times when it's been used to enforce trash issues.
Has it actually been successful? I mean, I always sense that it hasn't been in many cases.
Not sure, I'm not sure how aggressive the town has been about pursuing it, how much, I mean.
We could add heroin to the list, and then we could stay funded.
Maybe.
Are there any appealing to you guys? I thought the Hartford one was the best to make.
I liked the Hartford one the best, I mean, I can pass them around, I didn't make copies for everybody.
Yeah.
Is there any merit to suggesting that the select board perhaps do something like that, or do you think that that's not possible here? I feel like all these towns acted too late.
The towns on this list?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the whole concept is too late.
Yeah, I think this is somewhat, you know, acting after the horse has bolted. It's a lot harder to, you know, to get after somebody where a house has, you know, been in disrepair for 50 or 60 years, and there are a large number. And I think that's our challenge. And so one of the things is that sort of even the public perception, you'll have people that'll tell you that Elliott Street's way better now than it used to be 20 or even 30 years ago. I can't verify that, but the stories certainly are pretty vivid about how bad it was before this. So you're dealing with a sort of a public perception problem, and then you're dealing with, you're always coming behind, you're not setting standards at the outset. I would say that in general, Vermont rental law is also not very vigorous in this regard. I would say that, you know, compared to other states, New York stands out, that they're much more vigorous in imposing minimum restrictions for the quality of the housing stock on commercial-level landlords, and that there's an expectation that you would do that.
Do you think that this Hartford ordinance is useful? Would be useful in Brattleboro in some similar form?
Well, I'm not sure that what we have on the books actually can be as useful or isn't as useful as the Hartford one. I mean, I think the Hartford one is much more explicit on procedure, which perhaps the Brattleboro one could benefit from, but I mean, it's not kind of the type of ordinance I usually deal in, so.
Right.
You know, I don't know if this is withstood, I'm not sure that.
Right.
When's the last time somebody tried to enforce or use the Brattleboro ordinance? No one knows?
We had an obstacle with the property in town because it was privately owned and occupied, and we couldn't verify or get meaningful proof that it was being sub-tended, and so it was a very elongated affair in terms of obtaining, you know, any measure of a proper reaction from the owners, and the owners were very difficult to deal with and had been, you know, and this is an intergenerational issue, so it had been a very long-term issue. And I think that the way it ended up resolving was that other things that were coming down on the household, you know, finally came to pass, and so.
Yeah, I mean.
And then I think that we've had some instances with commercial landlords where we have threatened and used it, and it's probably, the last time it was used in a meaningful way was probably, I want to say six, five or six years ago now. And that's one instance, and I would say the evidenti, part of the problem is, is that the kind of evidence that you need to amass to do that is actually pretty high, because it, you know, you'll be appealed because it's so difficult. And then the other issue that we encountered then was that the judicial system was pretty lenient. You know, the, once it actually got to court, and we were making a case before the judge, the judge was sort of like, guy said he's going to do it, you know, that kind of thing. And we're like, the guy said he's going to do it for the last 15 years, and he didn't. And the judge is like, yeah, but you know, this is the first time I've heard that. You know, it was sort of like, all right. It was not, I mean, we got our day in court and we made some kind of progress, but I wouldn't say that we came out of there going, way to go, let's do that again. It was more like, that is such a huge time suck. And so difficult to do for so little satisfaction, that this is really not how we'd like to spend our time.
So is our conclusion that this is basically too difficult to tackle?
The one part that's interesting to me about the Hartford one, and it's a little bit different as far as I can understand from ours, is this, but I think it gets back to my problem with the evidence that you'd need to amass, covers deterior, under the key features, says it covers deterioration from deferred maintenance neglect or events not secured, not properly functioning, so we do have properties that are not properly secured or not secured and, you know, become kind of halfway houses for homeless people and so forth, and that has become an issue at various times. We could verify each one of those first three things, but I'm not sure what the standard would be. So in other words, how do you determine what is deferred maintenance? Is it the roof has fallen, is caved in, or that it's a little overdue for a new set of, you know, for new shingles?
Leaking.
Right.
That's the challenge.
You know, but that's the challenge, you know, you'd have to set criteria for those kinds of things, and they'd have to be on some level kind of easily observed and acceptable as a measure.
Well, Brattleboro has any structure that is in state of dilapidation, deterioration or decay.
Right, okay.
Faulty construction, overcrowded, open, vacant or abandoned, damaged by fire, to the extent so as to not provide shelter, endangered collapse or failure, and dangerous to anyone on or near the property.
Right.
So what does the state, what is the agency of community, so what is that group?
ACC, CCHD?
Commerce and Community Development.
They must have some program to help towns with this situation.
No, no, I'd say, I'm not aware of anything.
I mean, I think that maybe use of community development block grants and reinvesting in your own community.
We've raised it with them as an issue, I mean, I haven't raised it with Noel, but I've raised it with Jen Holler, and she acknowledges the issue, and we've raised it with regard to mobile homes as well as more traditional neighborhoods, because it's, you know, it's definitely an issue for us, and.
And I think I went to some state forum where there were nonprofits that might have done this sort of thing, funding for housing rehabilitation.
Right, I think organizations like SEVCA do that kind of thing, you know.
Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust.
I mean, there is, there is a pool of funds down here.
Right.
For rehabilitation, I mean, Wyndham Windsor, the town sponsor there.
Yes, in fact, Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust were the recipients of a grant specifically to address some of these issues recently.
I think they have low-interest loans, I think that's what it is. Their grants.
The challenge with them, though, is if the owner is not interested in playing by their rules.
Right.
Then nothing's going to happen.
Well, the other part, there's another part, too, which is, it would work for, you know, a person who's challenged on some level financially or physically or whatever, and that property is getting beyond them, but it's their property, and they're not deriving, you know, any income from renting out a large number of apartments. But one of the issues that we've got is that we've got landlords who are frequently renting out properties that don't meet, you know, I think the sort of expectations or the standards that the commission here is articulating. And, you know, a welfare agency like SEVCA or a state agency like the Agency of Community, Commerce and Community Development is not going to support a businessperson who is, you know, is deriving an income from renting out properties but is choosing not to reinvest in those properties.
I mean, there are some ones, we have the rental housing improvement program, I mean, and then there is the housing rehab funds.
But so, we can think more about how to use the existing sticks the town has.
Right.
And the carrots that are out there, and kind of knit them together to say, okay, well, if. to say, okay, well, if the health inspection says you have X, Y, and Z problem, then maybe the, um, whatever group can fund its remedy.
Um, right. So what you're suggesting is that we urge the select board to enforce something that's on the books, but to also advise homeowners of ways that they can take advantage of things that already exist?
I'm suggesting that we should ask Rod and Sue to investigate a little bit more before we make any recommendations to the select board. Because I think that there might be some sort of a, you know, menu of solutions that would be more positively presented and therefore get a better response.
Rod and Sue, is that doable?
Yeah, I think so. Um.
And if you need any man thing.
Yeah, we know a good man. I, I'm actually interested if we could connect with this person from the Franklin County Council of Governments. Um, that would be good and, and look at the scope of that Greenfield study. I do feel like that's one of those moments where the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has got resources. It's obviously a much bigger and more widespread problem across Massachusetts as well, so they're, they're tending to it. I think they're even folding it into some kind of, um, understanding of how you actually do smart growth. And I think that that would work, if I was to be able to encourage this, the state here in Vermont, Agency of Commerce and Community Development to take this on more seriously, it's like, you know, if you were really serious about smart growth strategies and rehabilitating existing village centers and, and towns, then you need to take on the issue of, of building a residential stock quality and even to some extent, commercial buildings. Like, there are commercial buildings, I feel, in Brattleboro that are all up and, you know, that, that go through phases of being semi-abandoned. Um, and certainly in very poor repair and are used for storage, you know, like, you know, they're like glorified storage units or something. And so, um, very much on the informal end of the economy. And, um, we could do a better job of, of just listing and detailing the number of sites where that's, you know, where, where it's below standard. I think that we've when we ventured down this path before, we tried to, um, recruit the lister's office in this mission and they were really reluctant to get involved, um.
Was it Russell at that time?
No, it's Al, but Russ was there. I mean, there are issues for them involved in, in, um, what we wanted to do was actually try and identify the properties in town where they as assessors had assessed that a individual, if this individual property was in really bad neglect, that you could measure that neglect in terms of the negative impact on the property values of the house over the back fence and the house over the other side of the street and on both sides. And that was a very difficult for them, thing for them to engage in. They're, you know, they're willing to acknowledge that there are some properties that fall into that category. But it gets to be extremely difficult.
Do you think someone like Dart would be willing to talk to us about that?
Dart ever?
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's got expertise in the same kind of valuation. He heads that landlord's group or if he used to.
Right.
I'm, should I ask Jason? I'm gonna put a little different.
Right.
I'm wondering how much energy at this point we want to put on that because we really, really want to work on the subdivision stuff and get that out there and put the education out there and really work on that. And I would hate to have us get sidetracked by a whole other big thing, um, right at this moment. So I'm not saying to not look at some of this, but I don't see it as being, I mean, it's been an ongoing problem, which is obvious from the things you said and I've been here long enough to know that and to know some of the particular sites where it's been an ongoing problem and still is. But I, I think, I, I would like us to really focus on our work that we've really worked on for the last year and, and have this be, um, not quite so front and center, not to use those guys' time, maybe a little bit, I think, you know, just to watch how we use our time around this right, right now especially.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that's a good point. I think there's background things that we can do and I think that there's some thinking through the consequences of whichever path we want to pursue that we can do it. Sue and I just quickly thought that, um, it still, it still presents itself as a sort of a management issue, but it's an ideal intern-type project for the summer. Um, and I think that.
To take pictures.
And you wouldn't freeze to death when you were doing it.
I remember when we were talking about it with the town plan advisory group, we reached out to Isaac Wagner at Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust and he had done windshield surveys
Yes.
when he had worked at maybe a council of governments in Maine. So I mean, I think that there's some models, like from a planning perspective, there's some ways that we could attack it, you know, whether we get into the regulatory.
We've discussed with, with, this with Isaac and they share our concern on some level and he's got some background in this. And so I think it's just sort of pulling some strands of different conversations we've had at different times over a long period of time together, making it a little bit more concrete and then, and then thinking it through. And then the only other thing I'd want to say is, um, I was gonna, I was talking about, I was thinking about it when I was talking about the issue with the assessors and how that works. We, I guess we had originally envisaged it in this so-called transitional neighborhood that the town would find a way of, um, positively rewarding neighborhoods for engaging at neighborhood level kind of cleanup activities and that we would try and direct resources toward them. So even if it was something as minimal as, you know, if somebody was to paint the facade of their house, um, and whoever pulled off the best paint job in a summer or something got the, you know, got their paintboard for them, right? If they showed their receipts, there were five hundred dollars of the paint.
That's a nice thing.
You know, then that, that would be the price, right? Something like that. And other ways that are very small scale of just encouraging almost neighborhood, you know, micro-level engagement in the process. And I think that's worth revisiting.
Landscape beautification.
Right, and there are, we've got resources that we could actually dedicate to that. I mean, it wouldn't be huge, but we've actually got them. And I, but I think what needs to happen is.
Call HGTV.
Right.
I've come up with group site.
That's right. Well, there's stories about the last time they did anything in Vermont, let's just say that.
Yes, yes.
Do you remember that?
That was Bell's course.
Um.
You're thinking of a path to.
It was the move that bus, those guys.
Okay, that's right, okay.
But they have the curbside appeal show where they come in, they target one house and then for big money.
There's something else I was thinking of that's just sort of slipped my mind, but I think, I think why don't we try and pull something together and go a little bit further? The Greenfield information I think is, just their approach I think is gonna be useful. And I think, um, if there's one issue that relates to the work that we're gonna be doing in the, you know, soon, it's the way we deal with commercial residential property in a zoning ordinance. So right now the DIB is fairly permissive, I would say, um, in issuing change of use permits or accepting the existence of large numbers of private landlords with large numbers of old homes with four or more apartments in them. And, um, depending on their location and so forth, we're pretty relaxed about parking accommodation, quality of the landscaping of the yard, the treatment of trash storage and recycling, a variety of site plan level things that if we were much more stringent about, um, and consistent with, then I actually think that we could see some shift over time. But I, I think that's an area of the zoning ordinance that's, that's definitely worth reconsidering. And I think that part of our challenge there is that the housing stock, there's a huge amount of housing stock here that's really large, you know that. You've got one. And the only way to afford it i- on some level is to break it up into apartments. But there's consequences from doing that. Um, and there's management issues that arise from that. I'm not sure if we've ever really addressed the consequences of that, um, in a thoughtful way at the rule writing level.
Does the fire department have like recommendations for how to do the other house safely?
Yeah.
Hold on, we're, we're spending too much time on this. And Caroline was right. The only reason I, I brought this is for long term. I don't, I don't intend to ask the staff to write an ordinance tomorrow, but I like knowing that this midterm might be able to do it in the summer. I feel like no one's really dealing with this problem, so why not? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's a perfect point.
It comes again and again, you know.
I think it's gonna keep on coming up and, and until we alleviate, oh, that's the last thing I want to say, which is very radical, but is interesting to think about. The Lincoln Land Institute, in their various work, recommend that towns like ours that suffer real property tax crises, and this, this plays into the property tax problem because endless numbers of residential homes or even commercial properties in very poor condition don't get taxed very much, is to tax the land, not the improvements. And if you think through the implications of flipping their relationship upside down, it's actually very interesting in this way as well. So if you're gonna tax somebody for the value of the, if you're gonna value the land very highly and what's on top of it is a four-apartment pile that hasn't been properly maintained for fifty years, then the owner has to make a decision as to whether they're gonna keep on paying really high property taxes, um, on the land or do something serious with the improvements to just, so that they can earn more income to make the, to justify the property tax on the land. And what it also does is it means that commercial property owners don't sit on empty real estate for years, which is often the case in Brattleboro.
That's right.
Because it's, they've got high property taxes to meet and in the end, it's in their interests to rent it out as a contribution towards the high property taxes on the land rather than leaving it empty because they can afford it. And there's plenty of instances, both downtown and other parts of town, where commercial space is just left vacant for years on end because it's like, what's the big deal?
That's right.
You know, I'm, I just, the, the taxes aren't killing, killing me, so I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm not willing to drop my rental rate because that'll send the bet, the wrong message to the market. I'm gonna keep my, my lease payments really high so that, um, you know, finally when somebody moves in, I'm gonna get it. So that would be something that is worth exploring as well and it's pretty different.
You know, when you're talking about the lister and studying either side in the back of the property, that does sound complicated. But it might be a lot simpler to just look at what has been devalued since the last assessment.
Yes.
That's probably easy to do.
Yep.
Okay. I just, I, I want to make sure we have enough time for subdivision regs. I know I brought this up and extended it myself.
It's a good conversation.
Yeah, it's good.
I think we should, I'd like to just check in on this for briefer periods.
Yep, sure.
When you learn something from a lister, when you learn something from Dart, if someone's able to catalog, even when you learn something from Greenfield, and I'd just like to be sort of on our long-term radar.
Yep, that'd be great.
Is that okay with everybody else?
Yes, totally.
I think so.
Okay, subdivision regulations. PowerPoint. Much more good PowerPoint.
You okay with this?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. You have to open up the little window thingy on the front. The little, yeah, you gotta.
So as you can probably tell. Should I get it back up?
Just get it, will you, last note? And then it'll take a while for it to jump across to the other thing. There you go.
What happens if no one buys a property and taxes it? You're Lincoln.
And you're linking the land to.
Person doesn't pay the taxes, the property goes up for tax sale, no one buys the property. What happens then?
Typically, typically right now, the town is always a bidder and the town would end up with it. And I think in this scenario, if the property taxes are really high, that's one of the things that would have to be worked out. But under those circumstances, it becomes worth it to some, for somebody to improve the property so that.
Isn't that like what happened with the bar?
The bar?
What's the name of the bar that was in the, um, the one that's down in the basement?
The mall zone?
Yeah. They were closed because of back taxes.
They, yes, but that's to the state.
I thought they, I thought they closed because of liquor license.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, I think they're, they didn't get the liquor license.
Was this the mall zone?
Yeah, but I thought they had back taxes. Because they leased that space.
It might have had back payments to the state on X. So it's that weird thing where you have to go to the state identified alcohol outlet to buy your booze and then you pay taxes on it. And there's, there was some kind of like.
Pay you later?
I don't know.
I've heard of people going to New Hampshire.
Yeah, somebody got, somebody got caught the other day on the interstate with, with forty thousand dollars of the booze in their car.
Wow.
Oh, smuggling, okay.
We'll be in West.
This is a conversation for the, for the.
Yeah, for the bar.
Pop after meetings. So if you had a chance to look through what I said to you, you will notice that we don't have any new drawings. And I went back through lots of new, of, of old documents and I just can't find what James and Mark were referring to last time, so.
I'll see what I can find.
But we, yeah, we're working, so what we've done in response to that is we've reached out to Wyndham Regional in an attempt to identify a landscape architect who's got the skills that we're looking for and who can interpret the data that is relevant to Brattleboro. So the topography here is different and then the parcel boundaries are different here and we're actually.
Those ones are nice.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
You build from each element.
Well, I think they, yeah, I think they build nicely on the element, but I think we get to the end and I think the response from James in particular was.
That's not like us.
That, that we don't want to turn people off. We want to use something that's more complex.
Right, yeah, just on a personal note, because it's winter, because of what we're doing, standing in a hall looking out, we could see lights from our neighbors for the first time tonight. We're disappointed. Can't believe it.
I just want to live in New Jersey.
What?
I don't know. Tried so, tried so hard. I'm gonna build a wall.
Um, so here, um, I may have added a couple of bullet points here, but.
Julie.
I'm making Brentland.
Yeah, yeah, are you, are you okay?
Yeah.
Oop, is that good?
Uh, maybe get, maybe this one, if we get this, but no, that's. I guess that works.
How's that?
Yeah, that's good.
That's good.
The last one, you okay?
You look, you have some, like you have something to say, James?
No, no, no.
Um, defining what a subdivision is. This is a new slide based on, you know, we need to basically let everybody know how old our regulations are and why, why.
That was good.
So what is, what's primarily been in Brattleboro for the last ten or two?
So there's been infill development in the form of one or two lot subdivisions on existing infrastructure. So these are kind of in the neighborhoods, you know, around the downtown.
Can I, on the previous slide, I think you, it's also valuable to note that the regulations were, um, obsolete and really could no longer be followed. Or some regulations, or at least. I don't know if you want to use such stark words.
Well, if they're obsolete and can't be followed, then there's legal ramifications to that.
Right, and because DRB is in a tough position, puts the applicants in a tough position.
Which is why we're changing them, updating them.
Right. Why new regulations?
Right.
And so this is, this is anecdotal.
Yeah.
Have to speak to that one. But basically we're seeing the infill development, like it's like one, two, lot. we're seeing the infill development, like one, two lot subdivision kind of here in the downtown area or in the existing residential neighborhoods, a lot of boundary line adjustments, and I wanted to find some sort of picture to put in to illustrate one or the other. And then in the rural areas, we're seeing, you know, typically less than four lots, where it's not serviced by municipal water and sewer, so sometimes it requires a new road, and if it is, it's generally a private road, there's some exceptions to that, bittersweet lane, um, a lot along existing road frontage, and then there's gonna be a picture there, so that's kind of what we've been seeing and why what we had doesn't address those needs. And then this kind of reviews what we heard through different outreach processes, whether from the EPA building blocks or the town plan, which include the state's sustainability meeting and work at the kickoff and bestialer activities for the town. And so these were things that we had in mind that we wanted to address with the new subdivision.
The audience for this is select board?
For this, I think it's whomever we take it to, so it, yes, the select board, but I think...
There's multiple other entities, I think Conservation Commission, the Ag Advisory Committee, the Select Board.
So open for discussion tonight.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're gonna move to that.
I think it makes sense to go out, try to speak to the West Brattleboro Association, or at least do something in West Brattleboro, doesn't have to be in affiliation with them, but different groups.
Can you just go back to that one for another second? We just need to be prepared to explain why these things are important, like why adopt a steep slope requirement? You know, like, this select board had a difficult time understanding that steep slope requirements affect flood control.
Right.
Basic little cause and effect, things like that.
Do you think they're better talking points than...
Yeah, I think the slide is fine, but when we get to this point, I think we really need to, that'll, just seemed during the town plan, that was always a question.
Yes.
Why are we doing, you know, what's, what's the goal we wanna achieve?
So then this would be an introduction into what our, what we're proposing in the new regulations, it's kind of just a title slide, showing the existing development pattern in town. That's supposed to pop up together, I gotta work on that transition, but we're proposing neighborhood subdivisions, which are in the more compact existing development areas of town, and then the remainder outside of this kind of circled areas are the rural subdivisions.
We might, see that second loop, Sue, the one that, the egg that is leaning westwards?
Yeah.
It might have to be shaped like a banana.
Banana belt?
A banana belt.
Is the overlap there for a reason?
No, it's just because I, the tools I had to draw.
The limits of the drawing.
Yeah, so I would be careful about that part, I wondered about that.
I, I just...
N diagram, it's not a V diagram?
It's not a V diagram. It's two eggs, one's falling over. Um, yeah, I, you know, it just encompasses a lot of rural residential, um, to the north and south of Route Nine there, um, that you wouldn't wanna misapply this, that to. But that, I mean, it's a drawing, so one, you know, one way you've done it here is just sort of ring it, but then, but there might be a shading, or there might be another tool to mark this stuff out.
Or I could do three, you know...
Hatching or something, I don't know, yeah.
You kinda don't even need it because the development speaks for itself.
I could take...
Yeah.
We could take the...
Right.
Yeah, at the risk of confusing people, I'd just get rid of them.
Right, and then just, it's the yellow and red blobs, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And if we change the resolution of that, nap a little, yeah.
The yellow could be a proxy for a banana.
It was just the shape I was trying to convey, okay?
I didn't get the purpose of this slide also, if you could explain it.
So this is to talk about kind of the, when we mean neighborhood subdivisions, we're talking about kind of the more traditional grid street pattern, these four lot sizes.
Maybe we could have a Brattleboro drawing.
I was actually thinking that the so-called tree streets would be a good, would be a good candidate for this, so you know, where the dentist is, you know?
Well, oak grove and...
Yeah.
A bunch of streets over there fit this kind of pattern.
Yep.
Just so that nobody can say, well, that's not ours.
Or pleasant and vine and all in there, same, same thing.
Right.
Chestnut.
Problem is, we don't have plaques for those areas, I think, but we could do, we could do some of those.
Even, um...
We might have some plaques for some of them.
All those ones off of Western Ave? Doesn't have any plaques?
No, chaspers, will they?
I don't know.
Yeah, we'll just even use a text map. Yep, all right. Nice feedback, what'd you get?
Town plan, so again, these are the characteristics that we are trying to encourage, not encourage, that we wanna see repeated in the neighborhood subdivisions. So our standards in the neighborhood subdivision section of the regulations are geared at having uniform lot sizes, making it walkable, so we'll be requiring sidewalks.
Is there a better picture for denser development?
You don't like that?
It looks pretty dense to me.
It does, but it's sort of hard to, I mean, I had to look at it a couple times to sort of, like, what is really there? What's that thing on the left corner?
This is still, I would still say this is a pretty small screen, you know, I would like it that we were shooting this onto a much bigger screen, so these would pop a lot better if, you know, the area was bigger.
I could, I could look and see.
We could mess with it.
I would just have, not to change the slide, but to have a note explaining why each of these characteristics are good things.
Right.
Walkables, the last two are pretty...
And that's in the presentation, doesn't have to be on the slide.
Yeah, right.
Let's write it in the slide.
Just to know, that the first two, what is the purpose of them, why are they, why are they being sought after?
There's so much white space in that slide, and I would just rather have the slide made into four quarters with each of those...
You know, I'm not, I'm not wedded to the, no, I think it's a good idea, I'm not wedded to this necessarily.
Yeah.
That's actually a good suggestion.
Kind of like quarters with only a little bit of white space, so that those pictures show up like Rod's speaking about.
So that's it on the neighborhood. And then what are our goals for the rural subdivisions and designing nature, to kind of take the conservation subdivision idea? So these goals are actually from, I think they're from the standards as kind of the purpose statement for these regulations.
Can you stick riparian quarter, quarters at the end rather than the beginning of it?
To move that bullet to the bottom?
No, no, I just mean, I think people identify with woodlands and wetlands a lot more than they do riparian quarters.
Oh, so at the end of that phrase?
Yeah, yeah.
Just swap it around.
That'd be the last thing, not that riparian quarters don't deserve their place, but...
Or woodlands, riparian quarters, wetlands, slip lanes, steep slopes.
I mean, to me, woodlands and wetlands are wet.
People identify with.
People lose interest by the time you get to riparian quarter, you put it at the end, and that's just it.
Yes, we'd like them to just like, love the whole thing.
All right. Forgive me for not paying attention if we said it, but this slide, I think, works well, and if we were to take the previous slide and break that out to make it look like this slide, then everything kind of...
Is consistent?
Yeah.
So kind of a picture for...
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, it's each one.
Yeah.
You could, yeah, actually, that would address, if you, yeah, not be worth playing with, so you could...
Not to make it longer, but say, uniform lot sizes, goals, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
And, but...
Okay.
And again, we want to be ready.
I like the idea of the bigger visuals though, 'cause visuals grab people rather than words.
Right.
They do.
Understand why, for example, we wanna minimize grading.
Right, I think it's really good that you're thinking of the talking notes, you know, the kind of things that are embedded in the PowerPoint presentation that the presenter might see, but the, the, the audience won't see, because we're hoping towards the end of this item to talk about which of you are gonna volunteer to actually make the presentation. So I, I think that Sue and I envisage our role as making sure that you guys have got all the background information that you need to make successful presentations, so that note, the notes, the embedded notes and those other kinds of things are really good feedback for us to get, 'cause we can build that stuff if we, if you tell us what you're looking for.
Uh, yeah, it gives us a, an opportunity here to take our notes and expand this into an outline and say, minimize grading, well, because of fluvial erosion, expand on that, you know? And that way you can speak thoughtfully and intelligently on every slide.
Right.
Should it come up.
Yeah, I'll turn this, all right.
This slide is basically to hit home that what we're really trying to do here is to give flexibility for a lot layout, so we're not sticking with the minimum lot size that, that in turn dictates.
The second drawing isn't optimal. The first one's great, the second one is too dense.
Too dense.
I mean, the first one looked a lot more pleasant than the second one.
But then the other, the other thought too is to say that there's some sort of a incentive also. Flexibility...
Right, I, I actually, yeah...
A benefit to the developer.
You know, where do we get these from, Sue, these drawings?
Maybe it comes from a building blocks.
Right, I was thinking they look like, um, what's his faces?
Milts.
Milts.
Mm-hmm, I think they look.
You know...
I think this, this may be more, this was probably the more problematic than the ones at the end, the process.
Yeah, I mean, what I'd say about this kind of thing, the top one that people kind of find more appealing, um, is if you were seeing aerial photo after aerial photo of sort of before and after, where this is some cute little farmer's field, and then it gets trashed like this with, with, 'cause these are not, these are McMansions, like, of the worst kind.
Houses should be bigger.
Right, and then it keeps on, and so this is this year's development effort, and then, you know, if this is the main road, then this is the next season's development effort, and it's another cul-de-sac identical to this one, with these huge areas of mown grass, with these huge McMansions plopped in the middle of it, and from where you're sitting and from what this looks like, this looks like hell, but actually, if you were to see sort of, if you could imagine two sets of slides, where you're going from farmland to this versus farmland to this, and then still protecting farmland, you know, you would like this one a whole lot better, it just, um, it doesn't, it doesn't convey the sequence, and in Virginia and in most of the country, this kind of thing is an epidemic, and you don't really get the sense of that epidemic here, so I would say in a weird kind of way, this doesn't really fit what's going on for us in the first place, and we still want some version of this, but something about the scale of the drawing has to change or something to convey it a bit better.
I think a better representation would be if you had a big piece of property where the road frontage got chopped up into little lots like teeth.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think that is something people find out for, and what we were really trying to fix.
Dental development.
Can I write a paper on that?
I'm done with writing papers, but yeah.
Yeah, we'll just get the, um, the mapper.
Okay, so this is the one we really need to...
Okay.
...draw.
Yep.
And also that there's carrots.
Yeah, at, at the risk of turning it into a really long slide presentation, I actually think that this might be better supported, I think that one of the things that Mil had going for him in his presentation was he just had this ridiculous, I can't remember how many slides it was, it was like two hundred slides of PowerPoint presentation, he could just like flick through it, and he'd go, oh, you like this? And he would have a whole set of photos.
Mil, is that the EPA guy?
Yeah, it was the EPA guy. So one way of actually, 'cause I think that this sort of bird's eye view, or whatever you call this, or plan view approach, works for some people, and it doesn't, it literally does just not, just does not work for other people who are not used to seeing things in that format, and so then photos, like street level photos supporting which, what these pictures actually look like from a different perspective could be beneficial.
Right.
Yep.
And then enabling flexible lots doesn't...
You don't really...
That doesn't, that doesn't go together.
You can't, well, you also, you can't see it very well, you can't see the use of flexible lots in the second image very well.
So we really have to expand this, so that this can show what we don't want and what we do want.
Yeah.
Just gonna chop it.
If you went from teeth to like, you know, maybe a five lot development, where you could see the lots more clearly, and there was some spacing, I think that'd be a lot more powerful.
Something that people would just be looking at chops to have.
We have some handouts from a long time ago that showed this.
Yeah.
I have looked at probably hundreds of images, if you guys can find them, please get them to me.
Yeah, I just...
I hear what you're saying.
They went from five teeth to six.
Yeah. You got no idea how miserable it is, just go.
I know it's miserable, but I think that's, you know, it doesn't have to be exact, that's the direction I think would be clearer.
It probably came from the workshop.
Well, we're trying to encourage flexibility, but maybe enable flexible lot layouts doesn't really make much sense to the layperson, so maybe it's like what we're trying to, from...
Yes.
Yes, yes, that's...
'Cause it, yeah, so I think, yeah, we, we've got this take, I mean, basically, the first slide, where, that doesn't resemble the kind of risk that we're confronted with, and then the second one, the second picture doesn't quite grab where we wanna end up, so it's just not...
The first one looks like High Point.
Well, in fact...
Sort of.
Yeah.
It kind of reminds me, I mean, Hilllands is a little bit different, but because it's got some open space, but...
Could be Hilllands, yeah, you know?
Yeah.
You know, you got...
We don't have a lot of it, but there is some of it, yeah.
And, and from the picture, I wouldn't have guessed that those were McMansions, you know?
Oh, yeah, no, the, they are mega McMansions, you're...
Yeah, but I wouldn't have guessed that, just from looking at it.
You know, these is your four thousand square foot jobbies, right?
Ridgefield, Connecticut.
So from here, I, seems like the last one there was, we needed to get into a little bit more nitty gritty of what's happening here and how we're, we're working it, so I don't know if you had any reaction as to whether or not this is too techie, but if we're gonna be, get it out there and get feedback, then it's kind of, we need to go through the steps. So we're taking a feature-based density approach, and the first step is to determine the buildable area, so, um, this basically gets at the suitability of land for subdivision, and, you know, we're basically adjusting the developable, we're gonna come up with a developable area.
I think it would be easier for people to understand if instead of deduct a hundred percent, you said like deduct all slopes, deduct all flood plain.
Yeah.
Deduct all wetlands and surface waters, deduct fifty percent setback areas.
Okay.
Yeah, that then, yeah, that's the question for me, good point, way to resolve it.
Yeah, maybe that's where you start tabbing back and forth to these later slides.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, maybe this works better if we're explaining how not all land is the same, and then we could show this map and show, you know, what the red areas are. Are the steep slopes, or maybe it does come fine after the last look, so we've just said, you know, you're going to deduct all the steep slope areas, you're going to deduct, deduct all the wetlands area, and then this is a map, you know, we've actually mapped it for the town, so.
Cut off the legend on the.
I know, I haven't been able to make it bigger. I don't have Snagit, so I can't do it anymore, do you have Snagit? I have Snipit or something.
Some crappy freebie thing?
Some crappy freebie.
I'll get your Snagit back, okay? Would you like Snagit? It's a completely different way of life.
It, it should be as big as possible, I think, because I can't read that.
Right. The only, yeah, the only other thing I was going to offer here, Sue, at the risk of like, um, making it worse, is, um, so this is a map for the entire, um, town.
The entire town, you just want to see it from a row?
No, 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 um, maybe just flip backwards and forwards, almost like a toggle, so that you could look at a couple of different parcels, so you could, like the, the slides immediately following it, so you could say, look, we've mapped it for the whole town, and then we have this so that we can produce it. So say, you know, somebody, Farmer Joe's got 100 acres, we can still go down and show people what that looks like at that resolution, I guess, right? I think that would be beneficial, because right now, you know, that's, it's interesting and it points out the, the pattern, you know, the top, the topography really effectively, but, um, it might be interesting to see it closer.
It could also be an immediate turnoff, though.
Yes, I'm worried actually.
Yeah, a lot, yeah, there's a lot of steep slopes, where can we really develop?
It's a pretty major turnoff on a certain level, yeah.
Maybe it's better not to have it, maybe it's better just to have one particular.
Couple of parcel level examples?
Yeah, I think so.
And maybe ask somebody if they're willing, I mean, you don't want to put somebody's parcel up without their permission, I guess, but I don't know how to do that without.
It's a map, in the end.
Take town properties.
Yeah, or you could just do a couple of properties together or something.
Yeah, it's almost like you want to present from maps online here, where you just zoom in.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, but I think it's too general, and my, my first reaction when I, when I saw it up there, I couldn't tell from the handout, but it is, it's like all that brown, it's like, oh my god.
Yeah, part of the reason I wanted to include this was to actually show that we've done the work, we, we have looked at the impact of the properties.
Yeah.
Um, but I think just doing that at the parcel level can be fun, too.
I, I hate to be the lone voice of dissent here, but.
No.
I mean, shouldn't we disclose this as well?
I think we should, yeah, I.
Oh, I see.
I think we should not dwell on this.
Yes.
But I think we, I, but I, I think we should disclose that we've mapped the town.
And then go into the immediately to the.
In this, in this way.
And I think they should realize.
Maybe the whole town then would be better.
It is, I think.
It is the whole town.
It is.
I just feel like at some point, the psych board should know that if they're going to do the conservation easement, a lot of property is not going to be developable because it'll be preserved.
Right.
And if they don't want to do that for their own reasons, that's their call, that's why they're elected, but.
But I think we should be able to defend the reasons why it's beneficial.
Right, I mean, this much of our town is beautiful natural resources, that's the reality, or steep slopes cause us to have these terrible floods, and, um.
Is the blue floodplain?
You know, that's the problem.
Yes, yeah, I mean, the other part of, yeah, I, I agree with James actually.
It also does is that it, it shows why we want to be more flexible, so, you know, you can look at this map and say, oh gosh, I couldn't sell the buy my property, but maybe you actually do have a little bit of.
Yeah, those little places are green, yes.
And so you can take that.
Right.
Do it there.
Yeah, that's a good thought.
Plus the mapping is a viable tool for developers to lead them to places that are less high impact.
Yes, and the other part about this too is, um, going back to the elected official category, many people are often kind of perplexed as to why there's not more development in Rattleboro. And the reality, the practical reality from a, from a cost standpoint, you know, regular, it's an, it's relatively complicated and expensive to build, even given our fairly lax regulations now on really steep slopes, so, you know, a, a winding driveway that does several switchbacks, so that you can get to the one flat part of the parcel for a house site, and then accommodating the septic and all that kind of stuff, that's much more expensive than, um, you know, your ideal fairly flat sandy piece of, you know, land that is pretty straightforward to develop. And so what is left, is a lot of land left, but what is left is the stuff that's more difficult to develop.
And you can also see there the developable areas in places we identified in the town plan.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, I think this image supports.
It's all starting to come together.
Yeah.
Yes.
This, this image supports the macro kind of argument that we make in the town plan really well. Because that bit on the eastern side is look, it sort of looks like where you should do it, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then the next step is we make a determination of the number of lots, and so I pulled in the town plan language, um, about the development areas. Um, and I think we probably need a little bit more justification for why the crosswalk and highway access only is why that one is such a reduced density from the site, but.
Don't you mean one per two acres of developable area above there, and one per four acres of developable?
Yes.
And what's the problem with the last town, last four towns?
They're very remote, um, they are, the town does not have an obligation to maintain them, other than to keep the bridges.
And cul-de-sacs.
Bridges and covers. So the more development, the more demand for an improved road. The risk, and, you know, the more development, okay, now you maybe gotta.
You still should just throw it.
Now you, now you encourage the more services.
Doesn't it feel like that to you?
Yeah. It feels that way, I just didn't know it was crossfired.
I have a suggestion here.
Yeah, less formal.
We're talking about doing, uh, feature-based density, that's what we're.
Yep.
So, um, and, and you've had step one, step two, and we do step three, um, but I'm wondering if in between going back, in between that, that crazy picture, with the density business, flexible lots, and where you're doing step one of the feature-based density, if it might not be better just to stick in the slide, that says, you know, feature-based densities, and just list step one, the terminal buildable areas, step two.
And the definition of what it is.
So it has the three steps, and then you're going to go into what the three steps are, so that people see that there's just really three steps that we're doing. You understand what I'm saying?
And also on that same side, you could say, makes seem obvious, but feature-based densities, density based on these features.
Yeah, however you want to do that, but not a lot of wording, but just those three, what the three steps are outlined, so people see that as really a simple, we've really made it simpler.
Yep.
Oh, we have.
And then, then you'll take each slide to describe, or a couple of slides to describe that.
So back, so you're saying to emphasize the step one part earlier, or?
Lay out all three steps first, and then say, and here we're going to explain them.
Okay.
Have a slide that just says the three steps.
Okay.
Tell them what you're going to tell them.
With a title on it.
Tell them, and then tell them what you told them. The American Social Science paper, classic.
Because that's very simple, and people will go, oh, that's all, you know? And, and the, the way you can talk it is the same thing, that we've really simplified the process, it's just these three steps, and then, and when you start looking at the steps, it looks more complicated, so rather than getting them all with the complicated first, really tell them it's simple.
Right. Well, in your theories, if you keep on telling people it's simple, I'll finally believe it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That we really, I mean, our whole thing was to simplify it.
Right.
Even though within each step, there's different criteria.
Right.
And then there's, you know, and then the last step is incentives, you know, so.
Who doesn't like that?
That's right, that's right.
And here's.
All right, here we go.
So then the last, um, the last set of slides is walking through the actual, how you're going to design the subdivision, so the first bet, the first that is determining the density, and then the next part is, well, now we want you to go through this process to sensitively design it.
That's with this little series of, yeah.
Can you go back for a second? There's no note on the public's, public access trail, what you get from that?
Oh.
I wonder if it might make sense to make this a three-column graph, you know, purpose requirement, incentive?
What would the third column?
The, the third column would be incentive.
Purpose requirement, and then what's the incentive?
Well, on the first one, it's for each additional 10% over the 50%, an additional lot is.
Oh, yes, that would be in the third column.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I think we did, yeah.
And then whatever it is for public access trails, and whatever it is for agricultural.
Yeah, that's good, yes.
It's all the same, I think it was one, it was a certain number of additional.
Yeah.
Lots, right.
But they're cumulative, but they're cumulative, so repeating it four times would only be good.
Yeah, because people, yeah, they're going to go, wow, wow, all those incentives.
Good idea.
Why don't we, um, why don't we put under step three, apply cumulative density incentives? Just to make it completely clear for those who are interested in such things.
Well, the benefit there actually is if it's a reasonable-sized subdivision that somebody's thinking about, it actually could be, you know, a dealmaker, you know, that's quite substantial.
Yeah, I think the evolution of these incentives was a big thing in our development, so.
Right, I mean, if you're talking about, say, an 80-acre development, and with the use of incentives, you end up being able to add, say, five or six parcels, and you're going to pull $200,000 a parcel, hmm, it's not nothing.
No.
Nope.
Given that that's what you pay for a parcel.
So this gets into the site analysis requirement, and just walks through the steps of what we, that an applicant would need to submit. So the first thing is to add the undevelopable features, so the steep slopes, the levels. And then the next step is to add the other natural and cultural features, so it could be farms and the meadows, stone walls.
Can we change that to agricultural features?
Agricultural?
They're not just ag features, they're things such as stone walls or.
It could be a.
It could be an archaeological site, it could be a tree, you know, a, kind of a significant tree.
Which would you want agricultural to replace, cultural or?
I just, cultural sounds a little, I don't know, we should go actually to the.
Historical.
But that's in the town plan, though, I mean, cultural and historic, I mean, that's stuff we talked about there.
What about cultural and?
You want to add agriculture to it?
Historical and cultural.
Well, we can say whatever we want in the slide, so people understand that.
Right.
Yeah.
I think what the distinction that we're trying to draw there is between human, human artifacts and, and shaping of the landscape explicitly versus some version of untrammelled nature, right?
Personally, I'd try to take cultural and put valuable.
No.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe I'm doing.
No, that's too vague.
Hypocritical.
When you go back to the things we said earlier.
I think cultural and historical is good.
Yeah, I do, too.
Um, I have one, can you go back one slide? Um, or actually go forward again. The way this is kind of all by itself, and it continues that way for number three and four on each of the other slides, now you can go back. I didn't, no, back, sorry, I didn't even catch this one, I just saw a lot of writing, and I kind of went, ugh, and so I'm wondering if this can be across the top, and then this, so this covers the rest of them, so we get to see that that's number one. Because that, to me, got lost in the visual, and being how I miss visuals, and people.
Maybe if that first slide without the picture was just the sentence.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, the same way.
Might work better, because I tried to size it all, so that when it appears, it looks like we're layering.
Yeah, yeah, might be better to sort of pull it out, yeah.
Layering is still cool.
Layering is very cool.
But that, putting the purpose to work with the applicant, I mean, that's a whole good thing to say to people, that we're really here to work with the applicants, because that's what we're doing, that's not the purpose of it.
Oh, yes, public circle.
Yeah, especially.
See, it didn't quite layer, but.
It's just a little funny little thing, but.
No, it's good. Um, and then step three is to identify the development areas. And I guess a good point to make there is just because you've listed something, doesn't mean that, you know, it can't be impacted by the development, it's just, you know, a developer's going to have to make some choices, and they'll.
Yeah, they're going to have to weigh things exactly.
Would this be good, to color code these, put these overlays here, each one? In some way, I don't know, I have to think about.
I'm sure that I can do that.
Oh, okay.
Unless, you know, we had new drawings made. Do you mean as to the steps, so like the?
To show different things, yeah.
The hash line in red or something might be useful.
Yeah, because you've identified the developable areas, so that stands out to people in the audience.
Yeah, I don't think Snagit can do it, so.
Snagit probably can do it.
Yes.
I'll get you Snagit, okay?
And then locate potential housing sites.
Yeah, you can, that stands out in and of itself.
And then find and design your own.
Yeah, it's sort of shifted in a funny little way there, but that's okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just the scale, but I just think that's way too many houses.
Yeah, no, this, this is the one that I had picked out, is having somebody redesign, yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to work with a landscape architect, hopefully. And so, so that one, that's number three, identified development areas, that'll be the lot, see, there's no houses or roads in there really yet. So when you go to the next one. It's like, my god, what is going on there?
Yeah, yeah.
That'll be dropped right back.
Yeah, because I thought when you just had the development areas, that we were just talking about two lots.
We don't have a scale on it, so we.
Okay, so that's you, that's, that's where you'd like to set it, so there's two.
No, no, it's just.
Those two blocks equals two sides?
Well, no, I mean, it would be good actually, though, to get, to have the landscape architect actually draw a cul-de-sac in there with like the four or five lots that we're seeing, and then show it as an alternative, like, well, but you could.
Right.
Do five houses like this.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's more.
And then show that you could, if you had incentives, it could be, um, more density.
Yeah. Yeah, and the last one shows the steep slopes and the meadows and, you know, springs and all, and it shows all those little things, but it is a lot of houses.
So how long can we put this in front of somebody who matters?
Well, you matter.
No, we don't matter.
Well, I had a couple of thoughts, so, but I don't know that we're going to have drawings by the 28th, I mean, we could test run it with the Conservation Commission on the 28th.
Yeah.
They meet at 5:15, they will be supportive. Um, but I think we want them supportive and vocal about support.
I don't think we're going to have the drawings by the 28th, Sue, I haven't even talked to What's a Place yet.
That's three, two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah, I mean, this will take a while.
Okay, so what do I say to the place meeting then?
Right.
Um, I also thought we could take one of our meetings to kind of do a public meeting, not a public hearing, but, you know, get, really publicize it.
Present this in practice.
You mean invite people to come?
Yeah, just get it out there.
Like when Tim came. More than our usual public.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Slightly more active than that?
All right, we're way over time there.
Very nice, Sue, it's just five minutes. Way over.
Keep me punctual, keep me punctual on that.
Yeah.
Do we have anything else to talk about?
Yeah, but not here. We're all good.
No other business.
I move that we adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Sue, for your work on that.
You're welcome.